All right. Good morning. Apologize for waking up everybody. It's 9:01. We're going to get started this morning. By way of invocation, I want to commend a teacher at MCI for his work on bringing the National Student Debate Seminar to the City of Morton in September. We look forward to hosting them, and I firmly believe these kids are our future. They are valuing truth over misinformation, and they're investing in themselves and in their ability to communicate truth to others. So we're looking forward to hosting them, and I commend Michael McGregg, who's the debate coach and teacher at MCI for his hard work and effort in bringing this to Morton. Agenda item number two this morning is the confirmation of our agenda. It's moved by Counselor Nancy Penner. It is seconded by Counselor Hank Gordmatic. Be resolved that the agenda for the meeting of September 23rd, 2019 is hereby adopted as distributed. There are no additions to the agenda. We will vote on it as distributed in favor. Please indicate opposed, none. We are adopting the agenda as distributed. Agenda item number three, two public hearings. We will be presented with information by the Deputy City Manager, and then we will go into a public hearing for two variation orders.
The process for public hearings is as follows. Any presentations are limited to a maximum of 10 minutes. Hearings will be done in order as they appear on the agenda. If anyone other than the applicant wants to make a presentation on any of the hearings, they must record their name and contact information with me prior to the hearing. What this means is if you don't give me your name in advance, you won't be permitted to speak. If you aren't sure, you can register with me and decline to speak when your name is called. All presentations must be directed through the Chair, which is the Mayor. Counsel will first hear from the applicant. Counsel will then hear representations, beginning with those in favor, followed by those opposed or objecting. Applicant will have opportunity to respond. If new information is provided, the others will again have an opportunity to present. Counsel may ask for clarification after each presentation but will not enter into debate. Minutes will be kept. Written submissions may be presented but must be made available to those who are present who want a copy. When presentations are completed, counsel will close hearings, and further input from public will not be permitted for legal reasons. Counsel has the option to adjourn a hearing and advise of the next date for the continuation of the hearing to obtain further information. And when counsel makes a decision where required by legislation, all persons who made a presentation at the hearing will be notified. For variation orders, when counsel makes its decision on the application, the decision is final, and there is no appeal.
All right. Agenda item number three, moved by Counselor Gordmatic, is seconded by Counselor Nancy Penner. Be resolved that the regular meeting of counsel be closed to convene as a public hearing for the following: variation order VO-04-2019, variation order number V-005-2019. In favor, please indicate. Opposed, none. We are in a public hearing. 459th Street South, there's a variance, which is a substance of a hearing. 3.11, it's Fine Blade Carpentry Limited, and it's variation order 4-2019. Do we call for... Do we call for people to speak at this point here?
Can I view scroll that? And I'll say what the variation is for. Page two, this is the first variation.
Okay. So it's lot 23 and 24, Plan 54187, development application. It is the variance application 04-2019 to increase the maximum two-way driveway width from 40 feet to 55 feet. It is currently zoned MG, which is industrial general. The subject property is located along the east side of 9th Street South between Jefferson and Wilcox Street. The property is currently being developed with a multi-unit warehouse industrial building. Adjacent properties are developed and zoned as follows: to the north, manufacturing uses zoned MG, which is industrial business; east, vacant land, zoned industrial business; south, manufacturing uses zoned industrial business; and to the west of 9th Street South, zoned industrial business. The applicant is in the process of constructing a multi-unit warehouse industrial building in order to provide direct access to the west-facing unit. A widening driveway is proposed. Counselors have a copy of that site plan and the proposed driveway. The property is located with the urban and preliminary designation in the MSCW Planning District Development Plan. This designation is intended to encourage a range of business development activities such as manufacturing, research and development, processing, assembly, and technology. This property is equipped with a full range of municipal services and is located along a recently improved roadway. The proposed 55-foot wide driveway is warranted in this case as an alternate to providing two 25-foot wide driveways separated by a five-foot curved area. Providing counselors of the opinion that the proposed variance complies with the criteria specified in Section 97, Part 1 of the Planning Act, the development can be approved. That is the report from our city planner.
Applicant is not present, just to confirm.
I don't believe so.
Okay, so there's no applicant. Are there proponents or opponents who wish to register at all this hearing? There are none. There are no applicants, no responses. Do any council... Does any of council want to discuss with the city planner?
So we're talking about widening the road by 15 feet. This is going to help future businesses that possibly could move into that area as well?
Counselor, it's just that it's the driveway approach off 19th Street South is being widened. If they had been 40 feet wide or narrower, that approach, they would have complied. And they could have done two 25s with a five-foot sort of island, like curt island in between. There's no value to doing that, so we recommend approval of a 55-foot wide approach to 19th Street South.
Okay.
Only question, why do we even have to approve that? Like, does it matter to us?
Counselor Hildebrandt, yeah. Well, there's two aspects. There's standards that are in the Bible. It's commonplace for access to either residential, by I guess, commercial, or industrial to be channelized in some fashion. There's a number of reasons for doing that. In this case, the other... So the other aspect, though, is this is the type of application that we typically have the designated officer approve, and we would then mail out the notice of approval and a 14-day period of time for people to appeal if they wish to, and then informally then, where there'd be a hearing in front of counsel. So there's a bit of a breakdown in communication between myself and civic center staff, which I'll take responsibility for. So ideally, this wouldn't be here. I think this is the kind of thing that not the best use of counsel. So my apologies for that.
Okay. No problem. Thank you.
Any other questions? No? All right. Are we closing each hearing separately?
We have in the past, I don't know if we need to, I'm not sure.
The hearing can be...
Okay.
You can just move into the hearing if that's variation.
Okay, all right. All right, the next hearing is variation order 05-2019, and this is the property, the corner of 19th Street and Thornhill Street. The variance application is 05-2019, and to reduce the minimum side yard from 30 feet to 20 feet, as you can see on the projector. It's currently zoned commercial highway. Subject property is located at the northeast corner of Thornhill Street and 19th Street with frontage on the Thornhill Service Road. The property is currently developed as a historic office building. Proposed development, you've all had a chance to see that proposal. So we will look for a presentation by the applicant. Is the applicant here?
If I may.
Yeah.
I spoke with a representative of the restaurant owner's consultant. They're out of Hamilton, Ontario. I spoke with them Wednesday last week, and they asked if it was necessary to attend the public hearing. And I said, there's no requirement under the app. It may be beneficial to have someone local in attendance. They were trying to make that arrangement, but it appears as if there's nobody here.
Okay.
I thought I was going to comment. Big house of choice really. Sorry, I'm not registered, so I'm not familiar with the protocol as far as speaking, but I just wanted to let you know that. I'm not representing the applicant, but we are, and we are the people that brokered the deal, and they did seller of the property, asked us to attend to see who's in the opposition. So the broker, whatever they're representing, the applicant also asked us to attend, so that's what we're here for.
Do you want to speak to it?
I don't need to speak to it. I'm just here to answer any questions or see who's in the opposition.
Okay. If there are proponents or opponents, you'll register to speak. If not, I've seen that.
So if there's a random construction, all right, like, is this thing building would be moved off or...
It will be in the way of the new building.
But it would be...
Yeah, appears to be a moving building. So I expect that the investment will be lost.
And the side yard goes on... Is it applicable to all sides?
It's just the west side yard adjacent to the property on at 19th Street.
And that's the side, the drive-through it was proposed for, eh?
Yeah.
Does the building go onto the... Is it simply the drive-through that...
It's the separation between the west building wall and the west property. So instead of getting set back 30 feet, the applicant is requested permission to provide a 20-foot set back for that location.
Okay.
Okay, the north, the north side, of course, we've got apartment buildings back there. Is there a noise fence or anything like that should be put in place?
Yeah. As is typically the case, this particular restaurant is very cooperative with municipal staff. They submitted a site plan some time ago. We pulled over it and recommended some changes, one of which was to put on their property on that north property line, a six-foot-high wood lightproof fence to buffer some of the sound. And sometimes people don't like seeing the vehicles, you know, being queued like that. In addition, they made modifications to their exit onto the lane to the north, so instead of people being able to access from the lane all the way from Mountain Street, you know, the orientation is now is they can exit straight to 19th, they can enter there as well. So they are again very cooperative with making these types of changes. They've also have a pretty extensive landscape plan, more than these other plans.
Question I've got, not related. It's related to this because of the additional traffic coming down 19th Street. Have we... Is it appropriate for me to ask about any study that we would have done or estimates we would have done for the traffic in that intersection?
The only estimate that I'm aware of, Counselor, is with respect to the lands that Parkland Place was opening up to the north and west, at some point in the future, when the lands basically west of where the future school is going to be located, we're going to have to orient some of the traffic access and egress along 19th Street or open up something else onto Mountain Street. That's in the planning stages, and we can control when roadway volumes or patterns would change through the subdivision process as those units in that area come forward.
Yeah. Okay, and like, it's traffic, like, both the vehicular and also, you know, active transportation and walking and the et cetera. I have concern about the additional traffic in that area that we need to address some type of a plan for that intersection and also for people entering the restaurant, because as soon as you have a restaurant, obviously, you're going to have, especially this type, you're going to have a lot of people with vehicles and walking traffic, so.
Are you talking controlled intersection?
Well, I have no idea. Yeah, whatever is needed.
Not teed, there is quite the same rate of...
Yeah. Yeah, we need to address some turnout lanes. I don't know, maybe caution lights. I don't have foot...
Well, as counsel is no doubt, we're further to the east of the mountain intersection is a restaurant with drive-through, and that is a controlled intersection. In terms of four-way traffic signals, there aren't turnout lanes or turn signals. We would... My sense is at this point, we would not require traffic signals at this intersection, but we would want to incorporate that investment when those lands further north and west open up for residential and mixed-use development. And we would look at the active transportation and just simple people coming and going on foot or by bicycle at the same time. So we would need to do that study down the road to make sure this intersection and the general area remains safe.
It's fine. I just don't want it to get lost, that's all. And also, the property, Mr. Castor's talking about to the east of this one, like, if that gets developed, you know, that'll increase the traffic too, so.
And we could probably anticipate that the lands of the co-op roads restored to the north are going to develop in the not-too-distant future.
Well, it's just all of that is to want to get that to get lost in the shovel, that's all. I have a plan.
The service road on Thornhill, do any upgrades need to be done to that to accommodate this development?
Yeah, we could. It's a kind of chip-sealed gravel asphalt-ish. It's not quite a full asphalt or concrete standard. My sense is, since most of the traffic is going to be oriented coming from 19th Street, we can probably defer that expenditure down the road. We probably need to look at that entire stretch from 19th down to Mountain and determine not just when it needs to be improved, but who pays for it. We would have opportunity, if any subdivisions or zoning amendments were required in the future along that stretch, to not just have the general taxpayer pay for those improvements. Those improvements can be shared as the properties are redeveloped and the use is intensified. And that's the standard approach in most municipalities, is a shared funding model.
Is now the time to do that, or is that, like, do we need to address that now?
We could address it now. Typically, on a variance for a side yard, that's not something that we'd trigger it. But we do need to look at this as that entire segment of that service road on the north side of Thornhill is redeveloped, and we can anticipate that's going to happen today.
My concern, Tim Hortons piles up on Rosebank Road, which I call Rosebank Road, well, and they're parked right out, just about out to the highway. I don't... Hopefully, we don't see the same thing happening here, where people are trying to... There are people going out the highway, but people are backed up around the highway, trying to get into the restaurant.
I share that concern with any drive-through, particularly with the major players in the industry. Generally speaking, their ability to site select, there are lessons that they've learned in the past in locations across North America. We typically steer them away from a site that won't function, but that's that they're going to be, it's kind of like having a shopping center, where you design a parking area for the busiest day of the year. There's going to be the odd day where we're going to see that stacking onto the roads happening. They've got a 13-space queue line, I'd say a split queue, plus they can back down the aisle way on their site, plus a little bit, if need be, onto the service road. So the potential, I think, for anything to get onto 19th Street is drastically reduced due to their site selection and how they configured the site. But it is a concern from time to time.
But it wouldn't really be the highway, though, because then we've got the service road, right?
Well, it depends on which way you come in, Counselor Hebert. If they come in off the highway to 19th and then turn in to the service.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's where my concern is. Some people won't realize that you can come in by the church and then make your way down.
I've never seen it backed up where it's located right now, and I think they're going to have more room for cars with the new, than they do now, so. I don't think it'll be that much.
Well, my concern there, Counselor Frost, is Tim Hortons backs up quite badly.
Tim Hortons is right by the highway.
Yeah, and this one here, you're kind of coming around the corner. My concern is if they come to 19th, and they're coming around the corner, then that starts backing down. So just, that's my concern.
Any questions for the agent, for the applicant?
No.
All right, we will, we have the motion. All right. Agenda item number 3.1, moved by Counselor, I think I know this by now, Gordmatic. Yep, okay. Seconded by Counselor Nancy Penner. Be resolved at the public hearing for variation order 4-2019 and 5-2019 be closed to reconvene as a regular meeting of counsel. In favor, please indicate. Opposed, none. We go back to regular meeting of counsel.
Do we need to approve this?
Yeah.
The motions are here.
Oh, yeah. All right. 1, 2. Last one way here. Okay, 3.11 and 3.12. Yep. So there's those.
Send one the other way.
Agenda item number 3.11, moved by Counselor Hank Hildebrandt, seconded by Counselor Nancy Penner. Be resolved that counsel of the City of Morton approve variation order 4-2019 to increase the maximum two-way driveway width from 40 feet to 55 feet in an MG industrial general district at 445 9th Street South with no conditions. In favor, please indicate. Opposed, none. The motion carries. Moved by Counselor Jim Hunt. This is agenda item number 3.12, seconded by Counselor Gary Hebert. Be resolved that counsel of the City of Morton approve variation order 5-2019 to reduce the minimum side yard from 30 feet to 20 feet in a commercial highway district at 881 Thornhill Street with no conditions. In favor, please indicate. Opposed, none. The motion carries. If you're here just for public hearing, feel free to leave. Otherwise, you're welcome to stay. There is no refreshment after. I'm not sure why I came here. Thank you. All right. Agenda item number 4.1, moved by Counselor Jim Hunt, seconded by Counselor Nancy Penner. Be resolved at the minutes of the regular meeting of the council, as the City of Morton held on the 22nd day of July 2019 be adopted as presented. In favor, please indicate. Opposed, none. Motion carries. Agenda item number 4.2, moved by Counselor Hank Hildebrandt, seconded by Counselor Nancy Penner. Be resolved at the minutes of the special meeting of the council of the City of Morton held on the 16th day of August 2019 be adopted as presented, sorry. In favor, please indicate. Opposed, none. Agenda item number 4.3, moved by Counselor Gordmatic, seconded by Counselor Hank Hildebrandt. Be resolved at the minutes of the regular meeting of the council of the City of Morton held on the 26th day of August 2019 be adopted as presented. In favor, please indicate. Opposed, none. Motion carries. Agenda item number 4.4, moved by Counselor Jim Hunt, seconded by Counselor Gary Hebert. Be resolved at the minutes of the committee of the whole meeting of the City of Morton held on the 9th day of September 2019 be adopted as presented. In favor, please indicate. Opposed, none. Motion carries. Agenda item number 4.5, moved by Counselor Doug Frost, seconded by Counselor Jim Hunt. Be resolved at the minutes of the special meeting of the council of the City of Morton held on the 16th day of September 2019 be adopted as presented. In favor, please indicate. Opposed, none. Motion carries. All right. Agenda item number 5, recognition of individuals and organizations and accomplishments of the community. We have, that's 5.1, a thank you to the volunteers of the City of Morton and Communities in Bloom. We will, spell my name out, we'll add to the record. And thanks to the folks who helped put on the Communities in Bloom conference, to the Chair and to the committee, and to all the volunteers who worked so hard. There's a thank you from the Communities in Bloom Committee. All right. General Business, 8.1, accounts payable, moved by Counselor Hank Hildebrandt, seconded by Counselor Gary Hebert. It's agenda item number 8.1, and we've all seen the accounts payable. Let's try to find it here. Used to be a way to...
Nothing attached to it.
What's that?
There's no attachment.
Right. Oh, yeah, right. So everybody's got a notification, information about the accounts payable. So moved by Counselor Hank Hildebrandt, seconded by Counselor Gary Hebert. Be resolved that accounts payable to August 31st, 2019 be confirmed. Any questions or concerns about this? No? In favor, please indicate. Opposed, none. The motion carries. 8.2. There's a way to find your way on the side here. It's handy. All right. 8.2 is a request from the Royal Canadian Legion. Dear Sir and Madame, the Royal Canadian Legion, Morton Branch 11 will commemorate Remembrance Day on November 11th at the Axis Event Center. The service will commence at 10:45 a.m. Please have your representative attend at the Axis Event Center before 10:30, so he or she can be properly seated before commencement of the service. Your participation at the ceremony will be most welcome, and we ask your support by purchasing a wreath and having a representative lay it during the program. Please also advise who your representatives will be and how many chairs we should reserve for the service on your behalf. If you choose to purchase a wreath, please call me as soon as possible to place your order. If you're paying by check, please make the check payable to Royal Canadian Legion. We also extend an invitation to you to attend the November 10th banquet starting at 5:30 p.m. Tickets are available at the bar in our clubroom. Remembrance Day is a time set aside for all us to think of the terrible cost of war and the need to protect the peace we enjoy today. Wreaths available and costs are listed below. Your society's sharing. Davidson was the public chairman.
Just in the past, the mayor has always gone to represent City of Morton.
What have we done for... I know I participated last year, but I wasn't involved in the...
Well, all you're doing is laying the wreath.
Laying the wreath.
Yeah. Do we always go with option two?
Yeah.
Must be somebody highlighted.
Is that our standard?
That and the motion is...
That and the November 10th banquet.
That's the night before.
No.
No, that's...
Yeah, I watched that last year.
Yeah, there's no banquet here.
Yeah, they're asking.
So the resolution we have is for, moved by Counselor Doug Frost, seconded by Counselor Gary Hebert. Be resolved that counsel of the City of Morton send a number to be determined.
The mayor.
Okay, send. Do we want to initial that? Since it feels formal.
Well, do you want to add on to that, that we purchased the size of wreath we purchased? We just add it on to there?
What's that?
There is it.
They recommend it.
And do we also want to add on there that the city covers the tickets for the banquet?
Hold on, have we covered no ticket? I'd go anyway.
I won't be in town that day, that weekend.
Like I say, the mayor's always gone.
Yeah.
I would say I've got on there. City covers.
City covers. I think we normally do this.
This is an...
The mayor's going to the banquet, I think this ticket should be covered.
Okay. Moved by Counselor Doug Frost, seconded by Counselor Gary Hebert. Be resolved that counsel of the City of Morton send the mayor to represent the City of the annual... annual Royal Canadian Legion, Morton branch number 11. Remembrance Day ceremony at the Axis Events Centre on November 11th, and be a further result, the city of Morton purchase a wreath that costs $45.
Do you want to add that other part to it?
No, I'm good. No, I'll just mount it. In favor, please indicate. Opposed, none. Motion carries.
He was free drinks, calling him a false date. You lost hope, Tom.
Did I? Okay. 8.3. The agenda is tax sale. Moved by councillor Gary Hebert, seconded by councillor Doug Frost. Whereas of 2019, tax sale scheduled for September 26, 2019 at 2 p.m. And whereas as part of the process, council may set reserve bids on the applicable properties and may authorize the designated officer to bid on behalf of the city of Morton. Therefore, be resolved that council of the city of Morton set a reserve bid totaling $7,735.87 plus all accumulated costs, arrears and related tax sale fees. And therefore, be it further resolved that council of the city of Morton give authorization that the city manager may bid on behalf of the city up to and including council's recommended limit.
Can you tell me that amount?
The amount, I don't think it's correct.
No.
It should be at least...
Seventy-nine thirty-nine sixty-four.
That was the amount posted on the official notice. So it's that amount plus anything that has been included up until the tax sale.
That's the current. So this is more current than... Yeah. So it will be higher, but this is there.
They don't cover us.
Okay. Any other questions? Move the motion. In favor, please indicate. Opposed, none. All right. Agenda item number 8.4, moved by councillor Jim Hunt, seconded by councillor Gary Hebert. Whereas Fine Blade Carpentry Limited supplied for subdivision on lots 23 and 24, plant 54187, also set Southwest Drive 35 West to subdivide the subject land into three lots for condominium phasing units. And whereas each phasing unit will contain one building with multiple units, with the lot for phase one being 16,150 square feet, phase two being 19,200 square feet, and phase three being 17,850 square feet. And whereas the city of Morton currently has a hold on all new subdivisions until the concerns regarding the wastewater treatment lagoon have been rectified, therefore be resolved that council of the city of Morton approves the application for subdivision number 4433-19-7886, with the condition that the concerns regarding the wastewater treatment lagoon be rectified prior to the work, prior to the commencement of work on the subdivision. So again, that's Fine Blade Carpentry is the variance order. We just dealt with the Ninth Street South. Quick question for Mr. Sanders. Does this, does actual construction, is construction delayed as a result of this? Or are, they can build and not give possession?
Yeah, good question. There's no delay. This just affects ownership, so when they go to sell either one of the phases or units within the phases, the subdivision is affected. They can continue to construct, lease, they can make interim occupancy arrangements. But ultimately, of course, you want to sew everything up if the wastewater treatment situation is... And that's, they're going forward on the basis that they, this is what they're going to do.
Okay.
So even if properties, I'm sorry, go ahead. Even properties like this are held up for wastewater treatment, because there can be still little use?
They can be. I mean, again, they can, they can build, they can occupy, they can rent, but they can't carry on with the re-demising of property from two freehold lots into three bare land condo lots. I'd work with their legal representative and the developer to see if there's a way to keep this as a standard condominium plan, but due to how they're phasing it, that wasn't possible. So this has to go through the process where sustainable development has that opportunity to wait in. And so what happens then is council, there's no risk or jeopardy for council moving a resolution to approve this today. That'll be a condition, but they'll have to fulfill the requirements, or we will, of sustainable development, on the conditional approval that they'll get. Until we resolve that, they will not get their certificate, their final certificate of approval.
Okay. I just had one quick question. I know there's, there's not our opening, so we don't need a hearing, right? Phase three in the back, there must be some sort of a combo going back to them, right?
Yeah. We could, if this were freehold, if they're individual lots, there'd be a requirement for variance, because the property wouldn't have frontage on it and approve right away. So we would put a condition on it, but there'd be, they're now calling cross-access, something in the act, I think it's conforming construction agreement, sustained instrument. So the obligation here will be obviously on the owners to make that arrangement amongst themselves. There's no need for us to add that. It serves their own interests to do so.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Well, there was just comment from the drinking water, office of drinking water, saying that if it went beyond the four lots, the proponent is required to contact the regional drinking water office. What are those implications? Or is, is that just telling them there's another lot, or is...
It doesn't affect this circumstance, because they're not exceeding that, but it's a standard clause.
It is okay.
Related to the extent to which we have an environmental license, it's been approved already. So if we go beyond that threshold, we'd have to go back to water resources and they reassess the, the terms and conditions of that agreement.
Any other questions? Comments? No. Right. In favor, please indicate. Opposed, none. All right. Agenda item number 8.5, moved by councillor Hank Hildebrand, seconded by councillor Nancy You folks came in as if by intuition.
Or just in case.
Just in case, yeah. All right. Whereas the city of Morton advertised invitations to tender for the replacement of the city of Morton airport lights, and whereas there were three bids received for the project, therefore be resolved that the city of Morton approved the awarding of the tender to Tru North Electric for the replacement of the Morton airport lights in the amount of $155,000, $155,598 plus applicable taxes, this being the lowest bid received. Did you want to speak to this motion? Are you good just going to vote? Any questions?
I'm very, one of the LEDs are...
LEDs with, it's a triple electrical system, so it goes cheaper, because instead of three cables all over your room, it just needs one. If one burns out or stops working, it just bypasses up and it keeps on going. So we don't have the same problem we do now with long sections.
Yeah, it just takes the whole set. Yeah, because that's one of the guys that I think was putting in LEDs and putting them on.
Yep.
Okay. Good.
So I answered them, like, I think they're $185,000, but right, so it's well within the...
Yeah.
Thirty thousand pound dollars. Is there a timeline for installation?
October, beginning of October, the cable should arrive. The existing lights will stay in use. And beginning of November, I think the lights actually show up. But it's a plug and play. They can do all the wiring, the box installation, you just plug the lights in and they'll show up.
As proposed, I thought, so it's fifteen to November.
Yeah, yeah. So then next spring, we'll deliver the old lights to a big market. See if some airport wants to buy some old airport. Not any good ones though.
Okay.
An awful lot of money to put lights on there. It's true. So this is just east-west, right? Nothing north-south?
All right. Any other questions? Comments? None? In favor, please indicate. Opposed, none. Motion carries.
Do we need, just out of curiosity, do we need to note that the deposit has already been paid or not? Because, I mean, the motion's dated today, but the cheque was dated like a week ago.
So what happened there was the supplier requested the $50,000 on parts, so they needed to get that issued immediately, so that they could get parts ordered before going to that.
I'm just curious, if we get audited, they'll find out the cheque is dated pre, pre-approval of the, of the tender award?
Yeah, from council. Yeah, that was like a mistake on my part, because we, due to the time, like time sensitivity on this project, we improved it. And I was under the impression, because it was approved in the budget, and we are under budget, so we don't need council's approval on it. But then we looked at that, and it requires council's approval, so that's why you brought it in today.
So I just wondering if it's worth noting on there that the deposit cheque had already been issued prior to contract date, so.
Sure. I mean, we've, we've in the past, we've gone to conferences and approved it after the fact you, right?
Yeah, I know. But it was just from the other... With the audit, auditor's point of view, that, because we should have checked earlier that, that it was, so.
Okay, so we'll amend the motion then.
Yeah, just noting that the $50,000 deposit cheque had already been, it's issued.
Yep.
Per contract.
Do you recall when the deposit was made?
Maybe 11th?
Just last week.
Yes.
Last Tuesday?
Last Tuesday.
So that would be...
Well, I signed the cheque on Friday. Yeah.
Okay, so it's the 20th.
20th.
Yeah, I signed the cheque Friday, so.
At least it was only backed.
Oh, at least it wasn't backed, that's right.
Yeah, the agreement stated the 11th.
Should have mentioned it before we passed the revision. Okay, so I amended it to include and approve a deposit made on September 20, 2019, in the amount of $50,000 made to the successful bidder.
Yeah.
Whoever issues on it.
Yeah, okay. Go ahead.
All right, I will reread it. Agenda item number 8.5, moved by councillor Hank Hildebrand, seconded by councillor Nancy Penner. Whereas the city of Morton advertised invitations to tender for the replacement of the city of Morton airport lights, and whereas there were three bids received for the project, therefore be resolved that the city of Morton approved the awarding of the tender to Tru North Electric for the replacement of the Morton airport lights in the amount of $155,598 plus applicable taxes, this being the lowest bid received, and approve a deposit made on September 20, 2019, in the amount of $50,000 made to the successful bidder. In favor, please indicate. Motion carries. I'll re-sign it. Okay. Agenda item number 8.6. Moved by councillor Hank Hildebrand, seconded by councillor Gord Matic. Whereas the city of Morton advertised invitations to tender for the supply and installation of new paste styled lime slaker, and whereas there were two bids received for the project, therefore be resolved that the city of Morton approved the awarding of the tender to Integrity Municipal Systems to supply and install new paste lime slaker in the amount of $181,295 plus applicable taxes, this being the lowest bid received. Any questions or comments?
What does that machine do?
It, it slakes the line that goes into the water treatment, or into the water.
It turns it to a paste.
It turns it to paste, yeah.
Okay. Runs it up.
Yeah.
So it'll have cleaner water?
Yeah. Better water.
Well, they're already have one, but like it's, it's a, it's like, so.
They're all started building it.
Yeah. Parts aren't available for the existing one anymore.
Okay. Awesome.
He wants the one from...
Just testing to see what you do.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah.
We dropped it, we might have looked up.
Yeah. Any questions? Is it an American company?
Sorry? Yes.
So should, I should have put Canadian funds in here? I just ignored the Canadian part, but...
Because at that, at the time of the report, we have that the exchange is...
Okay.
$100,000 there.
Okay. When are they going to install it, you know?
That, they will start working on it, because they have to build that machine, and hopefully by spring next year.
Okay.
But they'll do crap by November this year.
Do we pay for it this year or next year?
It's kind of like, we need to pay some deposit as well this year, so, some amount this year and some next year.
So what does happen, ensure that we include the unpaid portion of the budget next year?
Yes, yes.
You'll remember that, Gary?
Yep.
Put my memory back three hours. What does the policy make it fall off?
No, because we have...
Right. I'll remember that.
Any other questions or comments? And we will go to a vote. In favor, please indicate. Opposed, none. Motion carries. Agenda item number 11, moved by councillor Hank Hildebrand, seconded by councillor Gord Matic. Be resolved that council moves from the regular meeting to camera. In favor, please indicate. Okay. Agenda item number 11.1, moved by councillor Hank Hildebrand, seconded by councillor Gord Matic. Do we want to initial this, by the way? Except for the...
Yeah.
Camera session.
No.
I do.
It needs to be, that needs to be added.
The what?
That we accept the...
Recommended.
Question. Okay, the council moves out of in camera and back to in, back into the regular meeting and accept? Recommendations? What, just recommendations?
Of in camera.
Of in camera? That's it?
Yeah. All right. Agenda item number 11.1, moved by councillor Hank Hildebrand, seconded by councillor Gord Matic. Be resolved that council moves out of camera, of in camera, and back into the regular meeting and accept the recommendations of in camera. In favor, please indicate. Opposed, none. Motion carries. Agenda item number 12, moved by councillor Jim Hunt, seconded by councillor Gary Hebert. Be resolved that we do now adjourn. In favor, please indicate. Opposed, none. Motion carries.